Recording in progress.
Hello and welcome to the Select Board meeting on Tuesday, August 20th, 2024, and the time is 6:01 PM. I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
United States of America.
Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next up is Citizens Input. Oh, and Joe Simone, our other selectman, is on Zoom. Sorry about that. Go ahead.
Great. Good evening, Board members. My name is Roy Tilslie from Bernstein Shore. I know Mr. Marshan from, is it the ZBA or the Planning Board? I can't, or maybe both. I haven't met the rest of you, but it's nice to see you here today. I'm here tonight on behalf of 125 Development Corporation and the Phase Two project over at Puzzle Lane. I'm an attorney representing them. I work in Bernstein Shore in Manchester. My client has asked me to come tonight and to work with him to try to get that project back on track in terms of getting work moving forward, but also making sure that the town is on board with what we're trying to do. In doing that, I've met with our engineer. He will be submitting the MYLAR for the project to the Planning Board, I think in the next day or two, certainly by the end of the week. That will hopefully allow the conditional approval to be finalized. We are also waiting on response from the Planning Board on the bond. About two weeks ago, Enterprise Bank sent some bond language, some revisions, to the chair, and they've been waiting for that response. So I'm hoping that that response is close. Once we get you the plan, and hopefully you guys can respond, or the town can respond on the bond language, we will then be in a position to make the approval final and move forward at that particular point, once we file the plan. One of the things that I've spoken to my client about, and I've asked him to keep me involved as we move forward with the town, because I know there's been a lot of noise over this project, so to speak. It would be really helpful if I had a contact at the town that I could deal with when issues come up. I don't know if that's Mr. O'Mara. I don't know if that's somebody else. I've been in front of you folks a hundred times on the zoning board. Often in towns where there isn't a dedicated planner on staff, you kind of get these situations where people are wearing a lot of hats. It's never really clear who to talk to. So certainly from my client's perspective, he's asked me to carry the ball for his team moving forward, to communicate with the town. If the town could designate someone that I could communicate with, that might help, again, to keep the tone down and try to get the project to move forward. So hopefully, we think by this time next week, the plan will be final, recorded, and Phase Two will be good to, hopefully, in the town's eyes. So I thank you for your attention. I'm not used to only having about a minute, so.
If I, if I may, the rule of thumb is that all information and paperwork, and I know that they're aware of it for the Planning Board, should be and must be submitted by the Thursday prior to the meeting.
Right.
So that all that information can be given out to the Planning Board members so that they can digest the information and come to the meeting aware of what's going on, and not have it thrust upon them at the last minute.
Sure. Understood. Then that's helpful to know. Okay. Thank you.
Counselor, do you have a card?
I don't. Can I email you in the morning?
Why don't you come over and then talk to Rob?
Great. Thank you, folks. I appreciate it. Goodbye. Thank you.
Okay, sure, yeah.
Thank you.
Anybody else for Citizens Input? Okay. Moving on. Sam, you got here just in time. You got here just in time.
You're up.
You're up, buddy. It's right there.
So, okay. Well, thanks for having me. Sorry I had to walk in on you like this.
Perfect timing, Sam.
So Sam's in any building inspector. Just wanted to, a year ago, just over a year ago, we did, you asked me to come to you to redo permit, the permit fee schedule, just last, last June, June of 2023. And in that, we left out a piece that was probably important, and the town administrator and I talked about it like a month later. He said, hey, what do you do for after-the-fact permits in town? And I said, and we didn't really have a policy. So, you know, I am looking to, basically, I gave you a couple of code sections, building code and sections. Ones from the IRC, the International Residential Code. We currently are on the 2018 Residential Code and the 2000 IBC, the International Building Code for Commercial Buildings. We will be going to the newest edition shortly. There's a six-month grace period, so we probably won't be on that till the beginning of next year. But in the, in Section 1, it allows us, like a lot of times, we have residential properties, commercial properties, mostly residential properties, where people do, they do finish work in their house. They might put in an apartment without the benefit of permits. They might put on a deck, whatever it is. It's very common in residential applications. Less common in commercial, but it does happen. And so what happens is they go to sell the house, the bank does their research, they come to Town Hall, they start researching files, and then it turns out that there's no, there were no permits for the work. And then they'll come in after the fact, a lot of times, and try to get permits. So for whatever reason, some people, they, they forget they need permits. Some people don't really understand. Others know, and they just, you know, they might try to, they may try to just do it and see what happens in the end. So the co, the building code, the residential code, the IRC and the IBC that the state has adopted and the town has adopted, allows the town to, when, when, when it's been determined that work was done without the benefit of permit, it allows the town to adopt a policy to, to charge fees as a penalty for doing so. So a lot of towns do adopt this, and I am proposing, I wrote up, I drafted a little, you should have it, a little thing that's, that proposed language to add to current, the current fee schedule. So I'd like to add this to the current fee schedule. It's, it's not a lot of money, but it might be a little bit of a deterrent, and it might help the town recover. And in these cases, like, we end up putting a lot more administrative time into something where we've discovered somebody's finished their basement or, or something like that. Where we, it costs us more administrative time, and this will help recover some of those small costs. It's, it's, it's not a lot of money. But I'll read it, I'll read it to you. It says, "Work commencing before permit issuance. See the IBC Section 109.4, the IRC Section R108.7." And it just says, "Any person," I put corporation in there, I was, I use that word a lot when I used to work for the state. That should come out. I want to strike that. Shouldn't say corporation. "Any person who is found to have demolished, constructed, altered, removed, or changed the use of a building or structure without the benefit of building, electrical, plumbing, mechanical, or change in use permit shall upon issuance of said permit be assessed a fee of 200% of the regular permit fee." Again, it's, it's, doesn't add up to huge fees, but I think it's, it's important that, that we have something like that in place. And I, and the town administrator is actually the one that brought it up to me last year, so that's, that's what I'm here for.
Right. Which is, like you're saying, we're not looking to abuse the residents. Like you said, there could be cases to where they're not even sure that they should have pulled a permit or whatever, just to cover costs.
Right. And then, and then, like, if you have, let's say you have a licensed gas fitter. They know they have to, they know they have to make application for, for a permit that's drilled into them every year at their continuing education. So if they don't, they, that's, that's a problem, and they, and they, you know, they should be, they should pay a penalty for that.
Right.
You know what I mean? So again, it doesn't negate the fact that, you know, potentially if the town had other civil action against them, and, and the town was trying to accrue, the town was trying to, you know, pursue legal action, you know, other legal action for other civil penalties, this doesn't, that doesn't make that go away. This is just, just for doing work with no permits. Sure.
Mr. Chairman, if the board is inclined to agree with Sam, which I do wholeheartedly, you could simply take the document that's typed and in front of any, if you look at it, see the word "any"? That's how it starts?
Yep.
You could put "I move" in front of that, and that could be your motion. I move that "any person," if you're inclined to agree with Sam.
Sure.
Hand me.
Motion to accept said from the building inspector. How's that?
Pretty simplistic.
Yeah.
Second.
Second.
Are we going to take a roll call?
Yes.
Okay. Dan?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Joe?
Hi.
Joe Simone?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Sam.
Appreciate all your hard work that you've been doing.
Let me let these guys get on the air.
Thank you.
Yep, yep. Have a good night. Next up is hiring of a cable operator. You want to talk to them?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, I met with Diane today, coincidentally. She was here at Town Hall on other business. And I discussed with her the qualifications of the candidate. Thirty-seven years with Comcast, a resident of town. I suggested that, although Diane is known for her frugality, that maybe eighteen is better than fifteen, obviously, given the experience that he brings to the table. And Diane sent me an email shortly thereafter and said, "The job position called cable operator two will capture in that range, eighteen dollars an hour." And I'm making this recommendation, and Diane does not object.
That, do I hear a motion?
Move to higher. Ted Quinn for the position of a part-time cable operator.
Two.
Two.
Two, at the rate of eighteen dollars an hour.
Second.
Do you second it or I'll make it?
Seconded by Joe.
Roll call?
Yep.
Dan?
Yes.
Bob?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Joe Simone?
Aye.
Thank you. Unanimous.
All right. Thank you. Next up, we have fire department. Come on down, chief. Do you want Trish to do it for you?
I just, I know we had a couple of things. Just wanted to know which one.
Yeah, we do. This one's the requisition, and then the next one's the grant.
Okay.
So you just stay up there.
Good evening, Board. Excuse me. That requisition is for one vent saw. Basically, what the vent saw is, it's a chainsaw on steroids. High RPMs with a diamond chain on it. It's designed to cut through asphalt shingles and some aluminum roofing. The department has two of them. Both of them were purchased at the same time. Both of them are better than 20 years old. We set both of them out last year for repairs. One wasn't starting, one was leaking oil. They were repaired, and at that time, the fire department was clearly told if they stop working, you can't buy pots for them anymore. They're out of service. A week before I sent that requisition, they went to one of them. All the oil just came out of the, inside of the engine, all over the truck, and the other one will not stop. We reached back out to them, and their recommendation was do not spend, or attempt to spend money to fix them. Just purchase new. So this is a whole different style. So instead of coming in front of the board for two, we only came in front of the board for one to see if the style, this new model, you could say, will work.
Chief, what is the cost of going with the battery one?
We do have the battery. When the new truck was purchased, the decision was made by the truck committee to go all battery. Personally, the chain, gas-powered, will cut through basically any roof compared to the gas-powered chainsaw. Once it binds down, it stops.
The electric one, you mean? Yeah.
Well, the electric.
Okay.
It stops. We actually have a, we call them K-12s, which is the big circular saw.
Yep.
That's also electric. We just purchased, I think, last year, a gas-powered one, because the battery will not cut it.
So simply put, the gas power is a lot more powerful than the battery.
A lot more powerful.
It's reliable.
And more reliable.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
So you know we need one.
Right.
So I'm going to move to approve requisition 1079FT to the Fire Supply Company, Inc., or C, Inc., in the amount of $2,600 for the purchase of an emergency saw from account 42200303.
Second. Motion made by Bob, seconded by Joe.
Dan?
Yes.
Roll call?
Yes.
Oh, yes, all right. Bob?
Yes.
Joe?
Aye.
Joe Simone?
Aye.
Thank you. That's unanimous.
All right. Thanks, chief. What else you got?
The department, well, the town, was awarded the FEMA AFG grant for about $65,000 in change, respectfully asking for the board to accept the funds.
Okay. We'll set up a public hearing to accept those funds on September 3rd at 6:00 PM.
And Jim, you're going to type that up, so it's in a neat package?
It's done. It's posted at the post office in Town Hall.
Yep.
So we're ready to go at your next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Perfect.
The, the amount that the chief referred to also includes the match, but we should only be accepting the grant, which is $62,000.
Okay. Which is mine.
And that's the way we're going to post it.
Okay. Perfect. Sounds good.
Thank you, chief.
Chief, did you find out what it's going to take to fix those two pump trucks, the ones that failed?
They actually, thank you for bringing it up. It's going in my monthly report. They came down. We have not received the cost yet for the repairs, but they have been repaired.
Oh, they have been repaired?
They have been repaired, so they're good for another ye, well.
Sure.
They're certified and certified.
Sure. I get it.
But we'll probably cross this bridge again next year. It's a routine thing.
Okay. What's up, Joe? You got something?
No, no, it's.
All right. All right. Thanks, chief.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you.
Next up, health officer fees.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Currently, Mike Dorman, our health officer, receives no compensation other than septic inspections, and he gets that money from the state. He does far more than that. And we know recently from activity around town. And we're proposing that we establish a flat rate in the amount of $50 per incident. And one incident may take multiple trips back and forth. So I would ask you to include in your motion that anything that takes three trips triggers a meeting between he and I, and then we evaluate as to whether or not it triggers another $50 based on the level of activity and the service being provided. But again, currently, he is not being paid.
Sure.
Sounds fair.
Okay.
With that being said, I'm going to move to approve paying our health officer a flat rate of $50 for each incident he investigates. If the investigation requires more than three visits, he is to notify town administrators to arrange a meeting, at which time a decision will be made as to whether the matter in question deserves a second $50 fee.
Second. So friendly amendment to that, just, I almost want to put another line on there that specifies this does not include septic inspections.
That's fair. That's fair.
Right? You go with that?
Excl, excluding septic.
Exactly.
Yep.
Go with that, Joe?
I am.
Okay.
Roll call? Dan?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Joe Simone?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
All righty. And you, Robin, or Jim, you guys will convey that to Mike?
Yep. Robin will take care of that.
Just, and obviously, he's going to bring you documentation of what he's doing, not just, "I was here." Okay. Next up, Jack?
Jack, Josek, I'm here representing the transfer station. Did everybody get the paperwork and have a chance to look at it tonight?
From Northeast Resource Recovery?
Yeah, from all of them. We, Pete and I put together information from Wilford Alloy, Gremlin Industries, and Harding Metals. Should have got it all today. Yes?
We got it late, and I don't think we, we've had enough time to digest that, digest that information at this point in time.
Yeah.
That's my opinion, anyway.
We got it late, so we didn't get a good answer.
Well, I'll just kind of give you, you know, a quick, yeah, as best I can, because we, first of all, last week, I made a lot of telephone calls, Pete made calls. We sent pictures of the, of the metal pile to, to the three main ones. Wilford Agony, Gremlin Industries, and Harding Metals. And both of, Wilford and Gremlin, Gremlin and Harding, excuse me, told me on the phone that once they showed that, those pictures to their manager, they'd get right back to me. Well, they never called back. So I think after they saw the pictures, it kind of scared them. And this is what I think, and I, and what I recommend the selectmen do. A lot of these companies, from what we can understand, they, they basically want the metal separated, you know? And so they can come in, grab that metal, and they sell it on the open market. You know, the NARA, there's two options. That's, NARA is what we use ordering signs and all that stuff for discounts. It helps transfer stations out. But they also have a vendor that comes in, basically just like the guy we have now. But the nice part about it, they come in with their equipment, the trailer and the equipment to go through the metal, bend it and everything else, put it and take it off. The other companies leave a, a container there that we have to lease on a monthly basis, so there's a cost there. I suggest the best thing for you, you to do is to get these, a representative from these three companies, or four companies, and talk to them, because there's, there's so much that, on the conversation we have with them. You know, there's, some of these places, these smaller transfer stations actually do that. They get all the metal, the aluminum here, grade one steel, whatever, and put it in, and then the companies pick it up. We don't have that kind of manpower.
Well, of course they do, because by doing that, it's not all dirty metal. And what happens is by separating it, they're getting the higher cost if it's strictly aluminum, if it's strictly cast iron or whatever, and they're going to end up getting far less money in their pockets if it's all dirty metal.
That is correct.
And like you said, that's why they were horrified when they saw how it was just all screwed together in that one big pile.
Yeah. Yeah, if, you know, you got, you know, just an example of some of the stuff, we go with 60/40. If we figure 60% metal, it goes in the metal pile. What the gentleman does when he takes it, I have no idea, but he's got a lot of stuff to deal with. You know, the current owner, you know? It must take him weeks to separate all of it, so much of it. And, you know, if we start, if we started saying to customers or people that come in, "We're going to have to charge you for that," that might not be a good thing either. So those are the kind of things you got to think about. But my recommendation is to get a representative from all three companies, come down and make a presentation of how they would work with us, yeah? And any other questions? I know you didn't, I don't know, I'm sure what else, you know? We called several times, even today. The only company that called us back was, let me see, I think it was Gremlin, and they're coming, the guy's coming down tomorrow, Thursday. The other two never called me back, and I called at least a half a dozen times, leaving a message. And they know who I am, because I made contact with them before, you know?
And again, like you said, the stipulation of them leasing the roll-off units to put the metals in, so they're going to be receiving money from that.
Yep.
And it makes their job a lot easier and quicker for them, just like they do our trash. They come in, they hook up the container, put it on the back of the roll-off, and away they go. So it's a lot less time-consuming when it's already, all is said and done.
Yep. One of, one of the companies that, from NARA, I can't think of the name, like, someplace, and what they do, they come in, just like the fellow that does it now, but they come in the day they pick it up. They come in with all their equipment, they have a, a container, the carrier, and they're out. They take them, so there's a big savings there without having to rent the, the packed buildings, you know?
Yep. So we'll see what he, what NRA says.
Yeah. That's, that's what they, they have two companies. One that basically does it just like the other ones, where you have to put the metal in different locations, or this fellow here that comes in with all the, all the gear to get rid of it right there and there. Yep.
Sure. I mean, depending on what they're charging for lease on the boxes, we could be looking at almost a wash as far as getting rid of the metal.
Yes.
For what they would charge and how long it takes to fill those up, for them to come pick them up, to make it worthwhile to pick them up to begin with. And then by the time, like I said, they cash out what would be coming to us, they deduct it off the bill, we could end up not getting anything.
That is, that is absolutely correct. That's why when Pete and I looked at it, we looked at the fellow that NARA gave us, that he basically does the same thing that the gentleman does now. But he comes in with his equipment that day, fills it up, and he's out of there. There's no leaving of containers. It's something to think about, that the final decision is going to be gentleman. But if you look at the, we try to do a gross income on, on all the steps that's in the paperwork. So when you get a chance to look at it, you know, maybe there'll be some more questions. But I really think you have to have the group down. And I think what happened was, when we sent pictures out, in fact, I took the pictures and sent them. I think they were in shock when they looked at the transfer. I did. I walked all around, and I took several pictures, and I sent every one of them to them, and they never cut back to me. No. Because they probably realized that they couldn't, I don't know. I'm just, I'm just guessing, you know?
Yeah. Well, they, I would imagine that a lot of them don't have, like you were talking about, the, that huge tractor-trailer that the other gentleman was using.
Yep.
And again, these other companies want to just put roll-off boxes in because they have the roll-off, roll-off trucks that are accessible, doing all their work. And they're not using tractor-trailer guys. So for them, having the roll-off boxes is, is for them the best suitable option.
I don't know how we'd ever be able to, if they, if they demand that aluminum go here, copper goes here, God. I mean, I'm down, we're all down there all the time. If, if copper comes in at five or 10% of what's in there, I'd be shocked, you know? It's probably little pieces. I very seldom see any copper in there. Other than if you don't consider the wires that people would have to strip and so forth. There's electrical wiring that's in there all the time. I'm not sure if they would even accept that, because it's, it's still coated with rubber, whatever, you know? Yep. 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 Any further questions? I'd be glad to try to answer anything that you can throw at me, so, you know?
I have, I have a question that doesn't concern the metal pile at this point. And that's about, I talked with Pete. Pete said that they ordered the cardboard roll-off, the compactor. It's broken, waiting on a part.
Waiting, yep.
It's been over a week.
It's back order.
Has he made another call to find out what's going on with the pot?
He called, called us today. It's on back order. What does that mean to you? A week, two weeks? I don't know. Man, it's, it's brutal with not having the cupboard.
Did he ask them if they had another compactor that they could swap out while they're waiting for that for us to use?
Nothing. Nothing.
Well, why don't we check into that?
Yeah.
Is that ours or theirs?
It's theirs. Yeah.
Then everything is theirs? Because I know on the other things... Then everything is theirs, because I know on the other thing, some of it's ours.
Everything, the, the, the container and the pack itself.
The containers are theirs, it's just the shoots are ours.
Right.
Do, do we pay for something that doesn't work?
Right.
No, no.
We don't work, no.
We're not paying for something that doesn't work, but I believe their lease says within twenty-four hours, so.
I believe you're correct.
You might want to look at that.
So we should be calling them up to say, "We can't be throwing all our cardboard out. You need to swap this out and give us a working one, till you get this repaired, and then you can swap it back if you'd like."
Do that tomorrow.
Thank you.
Yeah, 'cause they, they, it's in their lease, it's twenty-four hours.
Yep.
I mean, we're not.
I was there with the guy two Fridays ago, Paul Robinson. He's a very nice guy, he just took all the parts that were necessary to fix it, while I was sending extra, he called it all in, what he needed and so forth, and.
Yeah. No, they can swap it.
And I, I think we're getting passed by on this, that, like I said, we need to call them up and tell them we want a functioning, um, compactor unit that we can use for cardboard, 'cause it's been well over a week, almost two weeks. And tell them we want it immediately, please.
So where's the cardboard going now?
Trash.
Trash.
It is broken down before minor stuff, you know, it's fixed.
Sure, right. And that's why I asked if it was, this was an us thing or a them thing, but.
This is the first time that it's broken down.
It just needs to be corrected.
Takes a lot of bees nails and all that stuff, you know?
Um, are all the cans still going to the Boy Scouts? The cans?
Can't, the Boy Scouts.
That's what I mean, they, they're still doing that?
Yes, yes, yeah, yeah.
I saw the gentleman there not too long ago on a windy day trying to pick them up.
When I was a Boy Scout leader and stuff with Paul, you know, we did the same thing twenty-five years ago. And he's still doing it, you know?
Yeah.
He's a, he's a lifetime scout.
God bless him.
Oh, definitely, yes, yeah, yeah. In fact, I think the thing's getting full, I give Paul a call, and he says, "Thanks." Well, it is, it's, you know, the, the turn systems used to be, you know, you'd pick four people, fathers and sons, to go down there, of course, pick them. And you'd have this Sunday or Saturday, you know, and swap around if you, you know, lucky if he gets anybody. So Paul would be up there most of the time, by himself.
Yep.
Yeah.
All right. I think that's it. You got anything?
Jim, do you have any questions?
Uh, no, but I did learn today that, um, Northeast Resource Recovery Association is a non, nonprofit.
Yes.
And they form a consortium of a number of communities. But they offer services beyond removal or arranging for removal. They'll actually come in and do an analysis of how your transfer station flows
Sure.
in ter- in terms of where things go. And I wonder if we might wanna take advantage of, of having them come out and take a look. Um, he's sending material out tomorrow to us.
Oh, fantastic.
And I'll drive it down to you, Jack, so that you can have it.
Good.
But after you, after you guys read this information over, I'm sure you have more questions.
Yep.
And, you know, cut, just have a meeting tonight just to discuss these things. But I really think you need to get the representatives down here, say, "What do you offer, and how do we work on those things?" You know? But my concern is that the, uh, there's no way in hell we could keep the separate metal down there, with the bomb staff there. One of the, uh, one of the companies has, they, they do their own crushing at that particular location, 'cause they have enough manpower. And he distributes it in the correct containers, you know?
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Can I do it, gentlemen?
That's it.
Um, how are we doing with the, um, the clothes bins?
The what?
The clothes bins, the donation bins. Yep.
All the three, the three that we still have there, the, from the last company?
Have we heard from them at all?
Jim knows. How many times have you called, 'cause they owe us some money? That's why we moved them over there, so that they couldn't come in and take.
Oh, I know, that was what I told them to do.
Yeah.
I told them, "Just move them and get them new ones."
Make room for the new company.
Okay.
Yeah, what we probably should do is just write them a letter and say we're gonna, uh,
Throw them in the metal pile.
Relieve them, whatever the money owes them, we can sell them, you know?
Put them in the metal pile.
I was gonna say that.
I'm picking up our slowly right now, the gentleman told me that they would.
Okay.
Joe Simone has his hand up.
Sure.
Yes, I'd like, I'd like to, I'd like to add that, uh, I think, uh, I think we should act upon that metal pile right away and contact that, uh, uh, Resource Recovery to get somebody in there and get that junk out of there right now, because it's awfully unsightly.
I get it, Joe, I, I think I'm gonna make a motion that.
Probably getting higher.
Yeah, I know it's getting higher. I'm gonna make a, uh, motion, and if they agree, we'll go forward with that. But I'm gonna make a motion to allow the, uh, town administrator to decide in this instance, 'cause I don't wanna, I don't wanna wait for another meeting,
No.
what is best for the town of Newton with the scrap metal pile.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Joe. I just, I, I don't wanna wait for another meeting. As Joe said, the pile is getting way too big, and it needs to be handled. Um, he's obviously, uh, if it's anything of a, a contract or anything like that, that's obviously gonna come in front of the board, but, as, as far as in the interim, you know, it's something, let's, let him take the ball and run with it and figure it out.
Well, I have a question for, for Jack, and, pardon my ignorance, Jack. Companies come in, and sometimes the, the load is so large, that they need a cherry pick to grab the stuff and put it in the stuff. What are the local capabilities of you and the staff that we currently have there in terms of maintaining any, any type of pile down there?
Maintaining stuff down there?
Yeah.
Well, Pete and I have been working on a cabota the last couple of weeks off and on. We had a couple of broken hoses up, the auto parts, and I did. And then the agri go down, a lot of the oil, a lot of grease, and, you know, gotta be fixed, and with that, it's a pain in the neck, the cabota, and none of us have been in years of, of knowing how to fit those little vehicles on the catalyst, so we're able to get there and put it in, and get it fixed. Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah.
Yeah. And is there, is he, is there any hesitancy on the part of Pete, and in his actions, you, about spending money to fix things to keep the engine running?
Oh, yeah, I, I don't know if it's any money in the budget, but I, I always told Pete, "You spend a thousand dollars, you look at the last machine, and every year, you spend a thousand bucks to get it maintained and keep it up." So it's a much larger, you know, when, uh, we have a company that passed away, we put, we're the cotton, you know, what would we do? We might not do the greasing on both machines, you know? Intermittent, that breaks and we grease them all, constantly, you know? But these must, they all need to tend to work.
Okay, so there, there's definitely money in the budget for that.
Yeah, I think there is, yeah, there is, yeah.
Um, so.
I know Pete thought it was more possible, but, well, give us some back, and you fix what we could with the pots and get the, the, the pad on.
Sure. Okay.
I just feel that there's a mindset, not necessarily at the transfer station, but across the town, that the Dominans are hesitant to spend money to fix things and think sit idle based on past practices, like, "Don't spend money after October."
Yeah.
That, that has to stop, because you're losing P M's for three, a quarter of the year. And then you end up starting January with a broken machine. So, um, I think everybody's starting to catch on that we want things fixed in a timely manner so that our equipment can be used as soon as possible, rather than sitting dormant, waiting for somebody to give the blessing to spend two hundred bucks.
Sure.
Just, you can't be like that anymore.
Do we have a preventative maintenance schedule on this equipment? So which is, that you have that, and do that, and then that keeps the machines going?
You know, you would think that when you revive, new pieces will come, I think so, I mean, probably being in your house, you cannot handle it.
Normally you do, yeah. I don't know how, I don't know how new that cabota is, but I'm sure I can, uh, down.
Well, that, that cabota was, we got that cabota when that fellow that was, was running the dog fighting, how many years ago was that? Huh? Trish, twenty-five years ago, twenty years ago?
Twenty-two, anyway.
We got that as, I don't know, we ended up with a transfer.
Sure. I'm sure I can figure out what it is and print out a P M maintenance for it, so you guys can have it. We'll laminate it, put it on the wall.
We have a motion on the floor, right?
Yes, we do, Joe. We were just having a discussion. Um, all right, with that said, Robin, we call a roll?
Dan.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
Joe Simone.
And when, when you gentlemen would like to contact any of the three companies that provide yet, telephone numbers, still to give it to a while, you know, to Jim and.
Yep, yep.
Am I upset?
Yeah. Thanks a lot, Jack.
Thank you.
All right. Did that, did that, uh, Trish, why don't you, uh, come on up?
So just a couple of things. Uh, first of all, emergency management was reminded that COVID is not gone. Just because the feds say it's gone, that just means their federal money's gone. We're all still catching it. We've had, uh, quite a few pots in town, we've had some COVID breakouts. I'm bringing this up because, coming up in a couple weeks, September tenth is Election Day. Please, from eight to eight at the fire station, if you are sick, wear a mask. We're gonna provide masks, um, sanitized stations. But last year, after election, we had an unbelievable outbreak. A lot of our staff got sick because people came without mask protection. So I'm reminding you again, and if the town clerk, I don't know if Mary Jo's on, also, don't forget to bring a photo I D. But more importantly, or not equally as important, is, please, if you're sick, we want you to vote, but protect yourself, and we will provide P P E if you need it. That's number one. Also, during elections, we'll provide a sign-up table for our alert system. It, we have more and more people that are signing up, but it's gonna keep the residents informed when we've got an emergency, if we've got road closures, if we've got power failures. Um, remember, if you put your cell phone along with your landline, you might lose your landline during a power failure, but I can communicate with you if you've got a cell phone. You also can give, um, family members that maybe don't live in town that would also get the alert, so they would realize their relative in town might be without power. Also, on that note, with, um, things like road closures, um, if our road agent was here, he would probably tell you, but I'm gonna tell you also, starting tomorrow and the next day, so the twenty-first and the twenty-second, New Boston Road will be closed, um, on, as a throughway to one twenty-five to Kingston. You can get as far as number twenty-one, New Boston Road. Uh, that's for the next two days. We've got signs, our message board is on our end, and Kingston has put a sign on their end. And for you millions of people in T V land, remember, you should pay attention to these unbelievable, exciting meetings, because now, see, you won't go out of the way when you go on New Boston Road. So, New Boston Road, I've talked about COVID alert. Uh, on the, on the last note, we have, the selectmen have been talking and listening to people about solar issues and solar panels. I wanted to toss this out there, because it's kind of exciting. You may have heard, I don't know if it's a rumor, if you may have heard it as a rumor, but this is fact. The town of Kingston, New Hampshire, is gonna be the first site in the state of New Hampshire where a power company, which is Unitil, is gonna set up a solar farm. They've got thirty-six acres on Toll Road. It's gonna provide twelve hundred residences about with power. And the town buildings are gonna benefit from it. So I'm throwing this out, 'cause you know we've been talking about it. So now I've kinda jumped on the bandwagon to see if we can get involved, maybe down the road. This is the first one, they said it'll be ready next year, but it's kind of exciting. So I wanted to let you know that I'm kind of on top of it, and I'll keep you posted. And I think that's it, unless I have questions.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thanks, Trish.
Thank you. Jack, I just thought of this while you're here. Did you, no, I just thought of this while you're here. Did you, were you guys aware about the cybersecurity training? Were you guys aware down at the transfer station for the cybersecurity training that's happening?
No, we're aware about it.
Okay, well, it's on the seventeenth, and we need a department person from each department there, just one?
The seventeenth of this month?
Yeah. Uh, no, September, September. Ten to eleven-thirty. It'll be at the fire station.
Ten to eleven-thirty.
Pete, R S V P.
Pete did R S V P? All right, I was just checking, 'cause Jack was standing in front of me, and I wanted to make sure we were gonna have the, every department, um.
Yeah, one representative.
That's all. Pete's going, we're good.
I'll be there.
Oh, all right.
Hey, you know, seven to seventeen, from ten to eleven-thirty.
You got it.
I'm gonna go in to sit next to the fire chief, I'll be, I'll.
You might have to.
Oh, he's so good. We'll hold steady, it's all right.
Yeah, we'll hold steady.
Uh, Mike, do you have anything? You're good? Okay. Uh, with that being said, I guess, uh, Jim, do you have anything that you want to hit?
No, sir.
Okay. Oh, the communications tower, just so everybody knows, we should be getting the lease back from the legal department this week, so probably the next meeting, we will set the, uh, public hearing, uh, public, uh, meeting for that.
I guess I would point out that there are t-shirts for sale. They're fifteen dollars. They're packed in yellow, very attractive.
Safety yellow.
Safety yellow, um, and.
The proceeds go to the two seventy-fifth.
Two seventy-fifth.
Okay.
Size is up to two X L?
Yes.
Fifteen dollars a piece.
All right. With that said, let's go into, uh, manifests.
All right. I move to approve the payroll manifest in the amount of sixty-four thousand, one hundred sixty-three dollars and sixty-three cents, for pay period July twenty-eighth through August tenth, twenty-twenty-four, with the pay date of August fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four. Payment includes zero dollars in opera costs.
Second.
Motion made by Joe, seconded by Bob, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Just so the public knows, Joe Simone has dropped off, that's why we're able to not have to do roll call.
Three, zero.
I move to approve the payroll manifest in the amount of one thousand, seventy-one dollars and sixteen cents, for pay period July twenty-eighth through August tenth, twenty-twenty-four, with the pay date of August sixteenth, twenty-twenty-four. Payment includes zero dollars in opera costs.
Second. Motion made by Joe, seconded by Bob, all in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
I move to approve vendor manifest in the amount of one hundred sixty-one thousand.
That number's not right.
Yeah.
There's an extra digit in there.
All right.
I don't know which one to drop off.
Um.
Do you?
No, not.
Why don't we keep going, and you can sneak downstairs and see.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
I move to approve a withdrawal of six thousand, eighty-four dollars and sixty cents from the stable community revolving account with the pay date of August seventh. Payments include five thousand, three hundred sixty-six dollars in R one, network for I T services, and seven hundred eighteen dollars and sixty cents to fuel a package.
Second.
Motion made by Joe, seconded by Bob, all in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
I move to approve a withdrawal in the amount of three hundred seventy-three thousand, five hundred from the emergency management operations account with the pay date of August seventh, twenty-twenty-four. Payment is to Greenwood Emergency Vehicles for the purchase of a new ambulance.
Second.
Motion made by Joe, seconded by Bob, all in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
I move to approve a withdrawal in the amount of one thousand, forty-seven dollars and fifty-five cents from the police special detail with the pay date of August seventh, twenty-twenty-four. Payment is to the state of Manhattan for fuel.
Second.
Motion made by Joe, seconded by Bob, all in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
I move to approve a withdrawal in the amount of ten thousand dollars from the town anniversary revolving fund, with a pay date of August seventh, twenty-twenty-four.
Payment is to American Thunder Fireworks Inc.
Second.
Motion made by Joe, seconded by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous.
I move to approve withdrawal in the amount of forty thousand dollars from the ambulance service revolving account with the pay date of August seventh, twenty twenty-four. Payment is to the town treasurer to deposit for partial payment of new ambulance.
Second.
Motion made by Joe, seconded by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous.
I move to approve vendor manifest in the amount of one million, two hundred seventy-seven thousand, one hundred sixty-nine dollars and forty-three cents for the pay date of August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. Payment includes one million, two hundred fifty-eight thousand, five hundred ninety-six dollars to Sanborn Regional School District, and eleven thousand, four hundred sixty-five dollars to the National Resource Agency for staffing services.
Second.
Motion made by Joe, seconded by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
I move to approve vendor manifest in the amount of forty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents for the pay date of August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. Payment is to the state of New Hampshire Criminal Records for employment verification.
Second.
Motion made by Joe, seconded by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous.
I move to approve vendor manifest in the amount of one thousand, eighty-three dollars, thirty-five cents with the pay date of August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. Payment is to Conca's in the amount of six hundred ninety-one dollars and eighty-five cents, and to Neptune Uniform and Equipment for Police Uniforms.
Second.
Motion made by Joe, seconded by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You have that, uh?
So it's one sixty-one, three seventy, thirty-nine.
So it's one extra one, gotcha.
Okay, I move to approve vendor manifest in the amount of one hundred sixty-one thousand, three hundred seventy dollars and thirty-nine cents with the pay date of August seventh, twenty twenty-four. Payment includes eighty thousand dollars to the town treasurer for deposit as partial payment for the ambulance, and twenty-five thousand to deposit for partial payment to purchase the new striker stretcher for the ambulance.
Second.
Motion made by Joe, seconded by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous.
Move to approve and accept the public meeting, the August sixth, twenty twenty-four, as written.
Second.
Motion made by Joe, seconded by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Move to approve and accept the non-public meeting, that is dated August sixth, twenty twenty-four, as written.
Second.
Motion made by Joe, seconded by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. All right. New business? Anybody got anything?
Uh, just gonna reiterate, um, what Trish was, uh, had said. The primary for the state elections, September tenth. Please vote. If we don't vote, then we got no right to vote. It's that simple.
Okay. Joe, you got any lyrics or rhymes you wanna read?
No.
Uh, I am good as, actually, do you, what's anything new with the planning board?
Uh, we're just looking to, um, get a, put in for another grant about the water sheds, and that'll further help, um, with the work that we've been doing for the, um, not the CPI, but the, um.
The CAT, the CIP?
No, not the CIP, the CIP.
Oh, right.
What's that, I see.
That's okay. You're entitled. I know, right, Trish? That's all right.
This is actually a thank you from Pack of Metals. We had their cookout last week. Thanks to the Recreation Committee and the Port of Selectmen. They had an unbelievable time, and they said to please thank the town. They had the ice cream truck, we had the, it sounded like the, the hot dog cart and tropical music, and they had party favors, they had a wonderful time, and they did say, thank you, thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Well, they enjoyed themselves.
All right, with that said, I will entertain.
I am going to make a motion to go into, um, non-public session under RSA ninety-one dash A, colon, three, C, reputation, and B, compensation, and then D, consideration of acquisition, sale of these, of personal properties.
Hold on, did you seriously just go up as he was making this motion?
I'm not talking about the motion. I'm waiting.
Well, no, this, this is the, as soon as we're done, we're going to do non-public.
No, but I have to have what Trish just said, because it's important.
Okay, we'll pause on this. We'll table this. Go ahead.
Thank you. Trish just went up there and thanked the town for Pack of Metals. I want to bring everybody's attention. She's the only one that went there to do the work for the town.
Well, Pat was there.
Pat was there.
Pat was there.
Okay, but it was like, you know, I'm just, you know, it's more of a conversation, that's all.
Trish, thank you.
Yeah.
In fact, thank you. Very much. All right, back to our motion. That is a roll call vote. Bob?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Dan is an aye. We were adjourned in going to non-public.